Cold enough for you guys, huh?
No.
It's gotta get colder yet.
Come on.
How much snow did you guys get? I just came back in freezing rain last night.
Not much.
Not much. Not much.
Not as much as Southern Missouri got.
You're live.
We're live.
All right, you got one minute. Just let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, I got six o'clock. You ready?
That's cool.
Let's do it.
All right, we're gonna get started. I'd like to call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Here.
Steph Nellie.
Here.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, number four. I always like to do this at the end of meetings. Unfortunately, I know we got a bit of an audience here today, but number four is executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Five ILCS 120/2C1. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
I know we have an audience, so we'll try to make it quick so we can get back out here and get to the good stuff. Okay.
Yeah. We're gonna have to board. I know. You're all hurting for it. That was in... He throwed it. No, I don't. I never know cars out. These are these are these are nice and short, five in the morning. Yeah. Yeah, you get scared. Well, you're gonna have to run somewhere on Sunday or something like that. Block it, you know. Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And anyway, we're getting forward. We're not gonna sit after. All roping to the back. We'll have to look. I think one of them is like eight or nine. You had any indication? We didn't pay it.
We are sorry. There's both we put it in. Well, we were supposed to be back. But we already got four.
We're getting much. We're running very next to each other. And then we're gonna jump through.
So yeah. Not to say that the city could.
They do it.
Right. Right. I mean, it's gonna help the armed. They they hold them.
Right.
Most of it is deep enough that you don't need that foot. I'm sorry, shower. It is. Most of it's most of the sewer is deep enough by the main. It's 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 it's. But I know I couldn't agree more. That I would. Yep. You have to call the. Yeah.
You could tell every time.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, it's 6:13. We're back in open session. Can I get a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Steph Nellie.
Here.
Here. All right, number five. Public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there are none, we'll move on. Number six, approved minutes from the December 16th, 2024 regular session. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, approved bills presented for payment in the amount of $714,863.54. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the bills?
Before I make a motion to approve the bills, I'll give some context here. The reason that the bills are slightly higher is we had a payment for wastewater treatment plant design, and we also had some fees and costs incurred associated with the Malik substation upgrade. So unless there's any questions about that, I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Great. Approved payroll for the January 3rd, 2025 in the amount of $67,028.13. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the payroll?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Aye. Number nine, appointment for police deputy chief.
Okay, if we can have Chief Margus come forward, his recommendation to appoint police deputy chief to Sergeant Dutlinger. If Evan could come forward. If you want to, go ahead.
Let's do that. Let's go around. If anybody wants to add any comments or anything like that.
Whoop, did you turn out?
You're on.
Gone.
My name is Mike Margus. I'm the chief police here in Oglesby. And I'm up here requesting the support for the appointment of a deputy chief within the law enforcement structure. For the last 54 years, the Oglesby Police Department held a position of rank known as the Assistant Chief of Police. I want to stress that this position of a deputy chief is not a new position being created. Like I said, we've had one for 54 years, a second command. With the appointment of a deputy chief, we're still not gonna hire another person to fill that position. The deputy chief will be taking a position on our scheduling, our current schedule now. The deputy chief will be filling a spot with current schedule. This decision promoting a deputy chief is essential for enhancing the operational efficiency, leadership continuity, and overall effectiveness of the Oglesby Police Department. First, appointing a deputy chief ensures that there is a designated second command to support the chief of police. In overseeing the department, addressing complex issues such as public safety, community engagement, and crisis management, a deputy chief provides assistance in managing day-to-day operations with strategic initiatives. Second, having a deputy chief in place promotes stability within the department. It promotes readiness in the event if the chief is unavailable, on vacation, due to illness, or unforeseen circumstances. The deputy chief can seamlessly step into and maintain leadership, ensuring that the department continues to function without disruption. A deputy chief can serve in a crucial role in the chain of command between city officials, community members, and department personnel. Finally, appointing a deputy chief demonstrates a commitment to professional development within the department. Succession planning, providing this opportunity, it shows that the city supports leadership, leadership talent from within, and ensures that the experienced individuals are prepared to assume greater responsibilities in the future. With that support, the city will not face the burden of seeking candidates from outside to lead the department ever again. The appointment of a deputy chief is a strategic move to enhance the overall capability, resilience, and professionalism of the Oglesby Police Department. I urge the city council to support this proposal, recognizing its long-term benefits for the community. I am also pleased to inform you of the significant milestone in our city's history. Officer Randy Asapinski is to be appointed as Oglesby's first female police sergeant. The Oglesby Police Department hasn't had a female sergeant since its establishment since 1906. This achievement reflects the ongoing efforts of our community to promote diversity, equality, and excellence within our department. Sergeant Asapinski has demonstrated exemplary dedication, leadership, and commitment to safety and well-being of our citizens, making her highly deserving of this appointment. We are confident that Sergeant Asapinski's promotion will inspire others in the future to enrich the legacy of the police department. We welcome your support as we celebrate this important accomplishment for our city and its residents. I am confident that with the continued support of the city and its residents, we can continue to build a robust and effective law enforcement framework that serves the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to congratulate both candidates. Our police department, fire department, ambulance department is probably one of the best you'll find around, and our continued support to them is in great need. And I am privileged to be able, I guess, make the motion to appoint the police deputy chief. No block with the.
Dutlinger, sir.
Dutlinger, what did I say? No block?
Yeah.
Dutlinger, excuse me, Evan, sorry. With the council's approval, then.
And I'd like to second that. Give an opportunity for everybody to have a comment if they have any comments.
No, I'm just gonna keep it short. I want to congratulate both candidates. I'm extremely proud of both of you as as a person who's on a promotional list and my profession in the fire department, the better of the two. I just want to say that I'm absolutely thrilled for both of you, and I know you're both gonna do a great job, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
McDermott.
Congratulations, guys. Appreciate the hard work you've done. Let's go forward and do this.
Aldridge. Congratulations. I have more to say in my commissioner's report.
I just wanted to say, you know, it's always challenging when you move somebody up to a new position of responsibility to know if they're the right person. And Oglesby's been fortunate a couple of times for our chief of police. He was kind of thrown through trial by fire twice before taking the permanent position of chief of police. So it gave us some evidence that he was ready for the position. And I know when we first kind of took over in the where we were at, we had relatively two young sergeants. So we were wondering if we had the skill sets necessarily. So we decided to gap the position for a bit, but I'm very excited now to be able to say that I know that Evan Dutlinger is professional. He's intelligent. I witnessed firsthand him to tackle a situation on a scene that was very a dangerous situation after a Fun Fest activity that we had. And he's one of the few people to handle one of the most life and death situations that we can have, especially in a city of this size, to have to handle live fire things. Hopefully, things like that never happen in the future. But to know that we have somebody that's ready, that can work under pressure, I'm very excited. I think we have the good pick for it. So I'm very motivated for that. So that's all I have. And so I think we have a motion in a second. Yeah. Can we get a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, Finley made the motion.
I'll second.
Sorry about that, guys.
Sorry. Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Aye.
So then if we can have the chiefs swear in, I don't know if I call him Sergeant Dutlinger or deputy. Until he's sworn in. Deputy chief when he's sworn in.
I am Dutlinger.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the city of Oglesby.
And the laws of the city of Oglesby.
I pledge to faithfully execute the duties of deputy police chief.
I pledge to faithfully execute the duties of deputy police chief.
Of the Oglesby Police Department to the best of my ability.
Of the Oglesby Police Department for the best of my ability.
Serving with integrity, fairness, and dedication.
Serving with integrity, fairness, and dedication.
I will uphold the trust placed in me by the community.
I will uphold the trust placed in me by the community.
Enforce the law impartially.
Enforce the law impartially.
And to strive to protect the safety, rights, and well-being of all citizens.
And strive to protect the safety, rights, and well-being of all citizens.
I make this commitment freely without reservation.
I make this commitment freely without reservation.
Fully aware of the responsibilities and obligations of this position.
Fully aware of the responsibilities and obligation of this position.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, excellent. Do you want to do any more pictures or? Okay. All right. Next item, number 10, appointment to police sergeant Finley.
Okay, so with that, we will continue on with our appointment to police sergeant Randy Asapinski. She will make her way. Congratulations. I guess make a motion to appoint.
I'll second that. All right.
Oh, we did a comment. Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
May I state your name?
I, Radio Oglesby.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant for the city of Oglesby, Illinois.
Of the office of police sergeant for the city of Oglesby, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I pledge to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States.
I pledge to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And the ordinance of the city of Oglesby.
And the ordinance of the city of Oglesby.
I will protect and serve the community with integrity, courage, and respect.
I will protect and serve the community with integrity, courage, and respect.
For the rights of all individuals.
For the rights of all individuals.
I will conduct myself professionalism and uphold the highest ethic standards.
I will conduct myself with professionalism and uphold the highest ethical standards.
Of the law enforcement profession.
Of the law enforcement profession.
I further commit to maintaining the trust and confidence placed in me.
I further commit to maintaining the trust and confidence placed in me.
By the citizens of Oglesby.
By the citizens of Oglesby.
And act with honor and accountability at all times.
And act with honor and accountability at all times.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It feels old, all right, guys. Got it, sorry.
Tricky. All right. All good things. Number 11, recommendation from zoning board of appeals in regards to greening variance request. I believe what we have here is this is just to place it on file. Can I get a motion to place the recommendation on file?
I'll make a motion to place it on file. Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
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 Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Aye. Number 12, ordinance number 1276-011625, greening variance request, 128 West Second Street. My understanding is there is a recommendation to approve the variance request. Does anybody have any comments on this or around the room, Steph Nellie?
No.
No.
Aldridge?
Neither. You know. Um, you know, we have a zoning board of appeals that takes a look at these things to make sure that they fall within the recommendations and I have no problem with that. So if we can get a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 13, Accept Commissioner Finley's Letter of Resignation from the City Council. I believe that the letter is, I believe it begins tomorrow on the 7th. So, Commissioner Finley, do you have any things you wanted to say at all by chance or anything or?
No.
Alright, if I can get a motion to accept the resignation letter?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter.
Unfortunate second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 14 is to appoint Hillary Moyle to the vacancy of Commissioner of Public Health and Safety. I believe that has to technically start after the resignation. So I don't know if that means start the 8th or whatever.
I think you could start the 7th.
Start on the 7th then?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so if I can get a motion to appoint Hillary Moyle to?
I'll make a motion.
For the 8th? For the 7th?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Hillary Moyle for the 7th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Congratulations. I know we have her in the audience tonight. Um, unfortunately, I think because the resignation for Finley starts tomorrow, we can't swear her in yet. The earliest we can do that is tomorrow, but we can even wait to see if we want to do that maybe at the next, at the next council meeting. Make that as the first item of business then, okay? Alright. Um, next item, number 15, Appoint Burton Lavens Building Inspector. So I had a conversation with Brian Spelitch, who's our current Building Inspector. I'd like to thank him for the 13 years of service that he's given to the city. You know, 13 years is a long time, obviously, to be doing a lot of different things. I hope he enjoys the time that he has to work on his business afterwards and I appreciate all the time he's given to the city. I look forward to working with Mr. Burton Lavens. Anybody have any comments on any of that?
No, I'd thank Brian Spelitch for his time and I have great confidence in Burton that he'll do a good job and this will help us out.
Excellent. Dermott?
I'm good.
Baldridge? Alright.
I think technically you should accept.
You want to use two?
Resignation, yeah.
Okay.
You can do it all together.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation and appoint Burton Lavens as a replacement.
Correct.
Good? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 16, Old Business, I don't have anything listed there. Uh, number 17, New Business, we have one item. Uh, Update Building Codes Per Public Act 103-051, Steph Nellie.
Okay, I'm gonna have you refer to your board packet. Uh, the very first attachment there is the statewide fact sheet that was sent out by the IML, effective January 1st, 2025. That public act requires that we do certain things and one of them is specifying the year of the building codes that we've adopted. So what I did was along with the city clerk, who's also the zoning administrator, we went through this and we looked at it. This appears in Chapter 15 of our municipal code, Buildings in Construction. So I'm going to take you through it line by line here and I'm gonna keep this as fast as possible because none of it is exciting information. It's completely dry. So what you see in red is the proposed change there. So for Pat, Pat, if you're looking at it, whatever's red in color is what would be proposed to be added on. Anything that struck out is obviously would have to be removed. So the 2021 International Code Council Collection is what I'm suggesting to the council here. Uh, I think that'll work well for us. Uh, I can tell you with the electrical codes, what ended up happening was they required arc faults for everything, then they walked that back and then they kinda changed it again. So 2021's kind of a happy median for right now. Along with that, we'd be adopting the International Residential Code, Existing Building Code, Electrical Code, Fire Code, Property Maintenance Code, and then I get us into the specialty stuff where our Fire Department comes into play too with it. And that's the 2021 National Fire Protection Association NFPA 1 Code. By adopting that, we adopt every other standard and code that comes along with it that's produced by the National Fire Protection Association. Uh, the Life Safety Code, uh, the Plumbing Code, and the 2021 National Electrical Code. Now below that, all the language is existing, it stays the same. The only thing I've struck out is the 2014 State of Illinois Plumbing Code because that's been moved up top so that it fits in with the rest of the other codes that we're adopting. If we scroll down, uh, now we're gonna get into local requirements for ourselves here locally. And, uh, this is for plan review and the application of what these codebooks actually do. So we never had anything that described what a complete set of plans was and we encountered a situation where it was very arbitrary about, well, I think it's this and the other person thought it was that. I went through, did some research, and this is what a complete set of plans includes. Now, just to be clear about this, this applies more so for new construction. So if somebody was adding on a fence or even an addition to the home, I mean, some of this stuff may not be applicable. And that's where you start getting into the bottom part of it where, um, it says that, uh, the zoning administrator, building inspector, or the commissioner, uh, may waive certain parts of that. So in other words, if the person's putting up a fence, they don't need to require, they don't need to submit sprinkler plans. Doesn't, doesn't fit. We get into the other part of it, there's a little bit of language cleanup there so that it reflects that the authority having jurisdiction is the city. So if Becky's operating as the zoning administrator, she's operating as the authority having jurisdiction or the building inspector or the commissioner who has to kinda oversee this. Uh, now we're gonna get into some of the stuff that we already have adopted that I think needs to be cleaned up here. And one of them that we didn't, I don't know if maybe you're unaware, but, um, after 2006, the Life Safety Code required that any new one, single-family residential have sprinklers in it. And I think it's a little bit unfair for somebody who's building a 1,500 square foot home to have to put residential sprinklers in it. Um, in the 2018 Building Code, it requires that. So the way that we can do that legally is we adopt these codes and we exclude those certain sections from the code that we're adopting. That's what I've done here with that. If you look, it says any construction, um, if we go down, let's see where. Okay, all new one and two family dwellings greater than 3,000 square feet shall be protected through, throughout by an automatic sprinkler system. So basically what that says is if somebody's building a 3,000 square foot house, certainly there's a higher level of safety that you're gonna want there and then that's why we have that. Um, if it's less than that, I don't think, um, that it's really reasonable or feasible to make somebody do that. I think it would slow down, uh, the building of homes in our community if we did, um, subscribe to what it actually calls for there. Everybody good so far? I'm almost done, I'm gonna wrap it up here. Uh, for any new construction, whether it's commercial or industrial, I'm recommending to you a zero square footage requirement for a sprinkler system. And the reason being is we're not talking about somebody's private residence, we're talking about a commercial building where you have people in the public in and out of. Uh, the upside to that is, is for the person who's building that building, their insurance premiums are gonna be drastically reduced because there is a sprinkler system in there. So it's not, it's not really a burden, um, but I do think that if you ask our Fire Chief or anybody else, they're gonna say that, you know, this has proven results nationwide. Um, the next thing down talks about the Fire Department connection on the building where if it has a sprinkler system, the Fire Department can tie into it. It's specified. I did check with our Fire Chief about that. He likes that, he agrees with it. Any buildings except for residential that have a sprinkler system will have a fire alarm system so that if that sprinkler system is activated, Fire Department is notified in some way, shape, or form. Um, where there are conflicts between two of the things that we adopt, the more stringent provision will prevail. And then modification of requirements basically allows, these are taken out of Chapter 4 of the Life Safety Code and then, uh, the beginning chapters of the other codes where it allows the authority having jurisdiction, which would be the City of Oglesby, to modify certain portions of the code so long as the overall safety isn't compromised. So that basically gives us the ability to make modifications where they're needed. When we start getting down into fees and all that, that was language cleanup, that Becky had suggested that would make, uh, the logistical part of how it's processed in the clerk's office easier. And, uh, then we just get into specifying, you know, designation of a building official, stopping of work, there should be some sort of an approval of somebody, whether it's the commissioner or the council, uh, before something like that happens. So, um, there's, there's contractors, registration, revocation, and hearing. It affords them a due process if there's a problem with a contractor. And then finally, uh, the zoning administrator part appears in Chapter 14, which is the Land Development Code. But I do think if we're gonna start doing some cleanup here, you may want to put that in Chapter 2 because, uh, that's granted by the City Council to the person, not necessarily the Land Development Code. So I understand their acts and what they do falls into that, but that should probably show in Chapter 2. So I'm sorry to be long-winded, it's very dry information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Go around the room. Finley, have any? McDermott?
I have none at this time.
Baldridge?
No, just thank you for spending the time on this, clearing things up.
I do appreciate you taking the time. I know you have a lot of expertise in this, uh, outside of the city as well. Couple of questions though, I noticed that the dates for some of the codes, I assume those are probably just the most recent codebooks. Why some will say 2021, some say 2014? Those are the most recent versions of those, I assume?
They're not the most recent versions. You wanna steer clear of adopting the most recent one because then what happens is, is the committees go back to work and they find the faults in them. And the one that's before it, they've already worked that out, so.
So the second most recent?
Yeah, when you adopt codes, you wanna skip a cycle. So we adopted 2018. So 2021 would have been the following cycle, then 2024. So instead of going straight to 2024, I felt that because there's this big gap in time, why don't we go with 2021? And that gives us a couple of years to see how things progress within the town and as far as development and that, and then we can talk about going to something newer.
We can always modify it later.
You can always modify it later, that's true.
I appreciate that. So they all update in some way, shape, or form. Since I haven't reviewed all of those, I'm not, I'm not super familiar with them. Is there anything in there, in your opinion, that is too stringent or too difficult? Because we are a small town, so I am, I am always cognizant of that. I think all of us in the council needs to be cognizant of that, that we don't want to be so stringent. And I hear that you already kinda thought about that when it came to like the sprinkler systems and stuff like that. Is there anything else in there that you think is too stringent that would cause a problem of a small town like us to try to adopt?
No, and I'm actually gonna give you some credit here. This, that's a very good question. So, uh, this is the second time I've had to do this with the municipality. And the reason that I had put in the modification of requirements part is that when there is something that's so stringent where it could actually compromise the overall project itself, it basically lays it on the table that if, if it's not something safety related where now we have a major problem and you're compromising the overall intent or the design of the code, you can't do it. But if that's not the case and we're talking about it's something that may be more financially related that could make or break the project, it gives us the capability to review it and make a decision on that.
I appreciate that. I'll defer to your, uh, expertise on that instead of trying to read.
I appreciate it.
Instead of trying to read 2,000 pages of, uh, material there, so. Um, the only other thing I saw in here that I thought was interesting was you put in here about the escrow $2,500 credit for the sidewalks. I was under the impression that we had already resolved that.
We did. Um, and Ken will probably remember this too. And we did not require it upfront before the permits issued because at that point, Becky, as a zoning administrator, might not know what projects might not be done until we see how the project progressed. So we had a lot of conversation about this in the Plan Commission. And we agreed that if, at the time, the letter of occupancy was requested, there were outstanding issues, I think there was a provision that there would be estimates done of the cost of the outstanding work and then an escrow would be made at one and a half times that amount with Becky to cover those costs. So I'm thinking some of this stuff may need to be run past the Plan Commission because we're making changes to your building code?
Well, not to the Land Development Code. That's only Chapter 14 and we already, we already went down that path. So that's why I steered clear of that. I don't want to tamper with the Land Development Code.
This is a potential problem to refer to when you don't really know what's gonna.
I thought we already did though.
I would love to tell you how we got there, if I can do so.
I don't know if we need to coin it all that.
No, I'm, I'm gonna tell you because the thing is, is when you, when you base it on the certificate of occupancy, the house is already built and the person can move in and say to hell with you, try and kick me out of here. Good luck with that to anybody that's sitting up here. If you collected at the time a permit, if they go and they pay their concrete contractor to do it, we basically refund them the money. If they don't do it, then we are actually in possession of the money at the time and we have recourse because that building permit relies on it at that point. Becky, I would yield time to you where you can clarify this if you'd like.
So, um, that change was actually done before I came back as clerk. I think it happened like shortly before I did. But I will tell you that I have found some problems with what you set in place because right now I have a resident who is in the process of building a home. They're almost complete, they want to move in, they're not able to put in, um, their sidewalks. And for them to have to give me one and a half times that and, um, their driveway and stuff at a time when they've, they're building a house, it's, it's, it's not very convenient for them. It's tying up their money for the next three months. Whereas if they had given me $2,500 at the beginning, that's all they have to give. Now you're, they're looking at a cost of maybe $8,000 to do their driveway and their sidewalks. They're gonna have to give me $12,000.
I guess my only comment about that is to give you $2,500 upfront, that's not gonna cover a potential problem, isn't really gonna cover it. And that's just requiring people who may never need this escrow to cough out more money when they apply for the building permit.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because I thought we looked at this to, because we actually had to modify it twice, right? We, we did the best effort the first time, then we realized, wait a minute, we're not getting the money upfront and it caused, there was a problem or two. And so that's what we came up with this other plan. So I don't have a problem if you think this improves it further, but I, my understanding was we already rectified that.
Yeah, you're the one that has to deal with it, Becky. So if you seem to think this'll work, I certainly don't have any problem.
This is more in your area than it is in mine because you handle the day-to-day logistics of it, so.
Obviously, every homeowner is gonna be different in their ability to either pay now or when they're finished building their home. I, I, I just think that if $2,500, $2,500 isn't gonna cover the cost, if you want to increase that, maybe by a bit, that's a good idea. I, I think they'd rather have a small amount held for six months or whatever versus a very large amount held for three months at the end of the process.
So this goes back to the original thing I was saying to Mr. Steph Nellie about is, you know, I want us to make sure that we have stringent enough requirements and things like that, that we're doing things the right way. But I don't want them to be so stringent to where we are dissuading people from developing or building homes or things like that. So if you're thinking that, the new thought thing is that it's a lesser amount just by holding something to them, that they'll ensure it will get done, I'm fine with that.
And we can always go back and recoup the cost if we actually become responsible for putting that sidewalk in.
I got a question. Is this something that we should get a letter of commitment to? I mean.
They signed that one, that one of the changes that we made to the building permit process is we added something where they actually sign off and say that they agree to do all of the improvements as required by code.
Okay, so basically, in summary, what we're looking to do is make a modification of reducing how much they might necessarily have to put up for beforehand. Is that correct?
Number one, doing it beforehand so that we at least have something. And number two, maybe limiting the amount that we actually have to take from them at one time that they have to pay.
Okay, if we, if we think the newest modification we made is not sufficient enough, then, then I have no problem with that, if that's, if that's your experience.
I just think you have a little bit more of control over it at this point because once that house is built and you're hanging their certificate of occupancy and the person says, "Ah, sorry, I ran out of money. I'm not paying for a sidewalk," nobody's going to go kick them out of that house. Not without newspaper fanfare in a negative way, so.
But we have it right now to where we can, if we have to, if they don't do it, we can do that and then hold that against them right now currently. Is that correct? But we got modified already?
I don't think you could put a lien on them or anything like that.
I don't know that it addresses that.
I thought, I was pretty sure that it did.
So Pat, if you want to talk to me about this and go through it, I'll table it.
I think if I'm understanding, Tony, you've taken the building permit process and put it under the building code section.
Correct. Yeah, I've not changed a word in the land development code. What they require there, they require. That is fixed and it is what it is. But we do it.
Am I mistaken? Aren't your building permit language, isn't that all in the land development code now?
Not all of it.
So I saw something at the very end that ties into the last question.
See the chapter marks, Pat? Sorry. Those are existing. So 1502100, those are...
24, yeah.
Well, this relates. So I see something in section 14 here at the very bottom here, and it says, "Should be moved to section two of the municipal..." That was a power granted by blah, 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 all that stuff there. So that is land development code. So are you looking to make some kind of...
I'm not looking to make changes to the land development code. What I'm saying is, is that the zoning administrator is referred to in the land development code. It lays out all of her authority and everything else. But if you're trying to make this clean, that should appear in chapter two, where everybody that's delegated, police chief, for perfect example, that's where that kind of thing should appear. It could be redundant and appear in both places, but it doesn't make sense to me that it would appear in one.
But then they have to be the same, Tony. You know, what I don't want to happen is we can't end up with one section of building permits in the building code section.
Yeah.
And a whole different set of building permit requirements in the land development code, and they don't jive.
No, I'm not saying that, Pat. This is copy and paste it exactly. So what appears in 14...
I need to sign this, Tony, obviously.
How about this? How about if I table it? And then if you and I get together, I'd be happy to walk you through this dry, boring information.
No problem. And we have a lot of time because we don't have to get this to the capital development board until the middle of the year, so.
Yeah.
My only thing is if there's anything that we're looking to remove or move to a different section, it's part of land development code, for that, I'd rather go through the zoning...
There's no land development code text changes, so.
Well, it says here, "Should be moved to section two of the municipal..." So that makes me think you're looking to take something from it and move it to another section.
What I'm telling you is you can leave it as is in the land development code, but it should appear in chapter two because that's where the commissioners, the mayor, the city attorney, the police chief, all the positions that have any explicit oversight or authority appear in chapter two. If this one does not, then I think we're doing it the wrong way because how did this person appear? If the council did not delegate this, if the council did not designate this position, how did we come up with it? I'm not saying change any language. I'm saying copy and paste this so that it's in the appropriate place if we're doing language cleanup.
I think 99% of everything you got here took a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I really appreciate that. But if there's anything that's possibly problematic because we're not pressed for it, we should probably table it, make sure everybody's on board with it, and then just rectify it.
I'm happy to do that for you.
Obviously, I'm going to have to create ordinance to incorporate all these changes anyway, Tony.
Right.
I think you and I need to get together.
All you got to do is copy and paste, and I'll bore you with all the details.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table till our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Or if we can get it in by the next meeting.
Oh, we'll get it in. This is all been...
All right. Roll call, please.
Stefanelle? Oh, I'm sorry. Baldridge?
Aye.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefanelle?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 18, public comment on any topic.
John Rosen on the IBW Union Stewart for the city of Oldesby. Good evening, council members. We are here to talk about the petition for a change in the form of government in our city and the adverse effects it will have on our residents, programs and employees. One of the toughest jobs in the public sector is that of a city manager. While most of us have had the occasional hard burn on having to meet the demands of one boss, imagine how much worse it must be for a city manager to work for five elected bosses, each of whom who has his or own ideas and priorities for the city. We did some research on the managerial form of municipal government, particularly in Fernandina Beach, Florida, where they have had the managerial form of municipal government since 1975. In the 49 years, they have had 16 permanent or interim city managers, resulting in a new city manager at a three-year median average. The national average is a seven to eight tenure for large populations, which is considered 50,000 people, and a tenure is cut in half for small communities, which is defined by a population of 25,000 or less. That timeline does not sound promising for the residents of Oldesby and for the progress and stability of our city. In a study done by the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, only three of the 33 managers in this study experienced no conflict with council members, and the remaining 30 were either fired or resigned. A change in the form of government in Oldesby will not stop conflict between the elected officials. Only the folks you elect can do that. Given this data, each time we part ways with the city manager, the city will spend unforeseen time, resources and money trying to find some perfect replacement. What might seem perfect for the five folks making the hiring decision at a given time may not remain perfect when the new officials are seated. With the realistic total costs, including salary, benefits, city vehicle and retirement package of $250,000 or more, and an assistant with a salary unknown, how will this affect the employees who keep the town functioning daily and the taxpayers and the programs in our town? The Dickinson House operates at an annual loss of roughly $30,000, while the municipal pool operates at a rough loss of $90,000. Would those two assets that help enhance the residents' quality of life be sacrificed to make a proportion of the additional payroll? It seems certainly possible that it can be. Or would there be layoffs to the full-time employees in the IBW? Could the parks department be cut out entirely and have both the baseball and softball boards be in charge of the playing fields like they do in two neighboring towns? If you've seen or played at those diamonds, it is fair and obvious to say ours here in Oldesby are of much nicer quality. What about the summer and winter recreation camps? Will those be cut because they are not a profit-making, but rather a service we provide to the children for a better quality of life? Or will there be citywide layoffs to an already slim day-to-day staff? We are already thin when it comes to manpower in the city, and any cut could be a massive disservice to you, the citizens, and most importantly, to you. What happens if a water main break or electrical outage were to occur? There could be a delayed or slower response time with water breaks or outages if the city manager were to privatize these services. It is apparent from the data shown by the accounts and finance commissioner at the December 16 city council meeting that property tax would also have to be raised on the taxpayer to create and sustain the proposed position of the city manager. According to the ILCMA, there are 10 municipalities in Illinois that have a population under 6,000 that use the manager form of government. Seven of those municipalities place their employees under a public works department. That means that all employees are in one single department. If that were to be implemented in Oldesby, your parks and recreation, street and electrical would combine. This will result in the summer and winter recreation programs being cut, your baseball and softball dungeons will most likely be tasked to the baseball and softball boards for maintenance. In the December 2nd mayor's report, the mayor stated that wages would not be cut due to the union contract. If this city manager form of government were implemented, that could not be further from the truth. Most members in the IBW will be stripped of their title and wage and then put in a laborer's spot at the lowest scale in the union contract. This will lead to higher turnover rates by the people who actually carry out the day-to-day functions and saves no money to you, the taxpayer, due to the cost of the city manager's salary. Employee morale could also take a huge hit. For example, in Corpus Christi, Texas, city manager Peter Zanoni made citywide budget cuts while laying off employees. He cut community centers while giving himself a 10% raise, which resulted in a $37,000 pay bump that put his salary over $409,000. These managers are not in the best interest of the city. The employees are the taxpaying resident of the family. They care about themselves and what their market value is, and they will use that leverage to boost themselves into a better or more lucrative position in a bigger city. We recently spoke with an IBW representative that was in negotiations with the city manager. And during that time, the manager told the workers they were nothing but unskilled laborers and that he could replace them at any time. Is that the type of government you want representing your family and friends? It will kill the morale and productivity of the hard-working and dedicated city employees if they are treated unfairly. In a December 13 social media post, the mayor stated that he feels, and I quote, "Most employees enjoying an elected official who isn't as engaged, isn't even really looking at time sheets in close detail, or even in most recent instances, will have their interests ahead of the taxpayers. Implying city employees are falsifying time sheets is not only dangerous, but a disgusting act for an elected official. Telling residents that employees have their interests ahead of the taxpayers is a slap in the face to us. Getting called out for an electrical outage, water main break, snow emergency, or a change in venue for baseball softball games at any hours of the day and night and promptly responding even during the holidays or family gatherings, is that putting our interests ahead of the taxpayers? Using speculation to further your agenda on this changing the form of government proposition and belittling employees only creates confusion and misperceptions in our city. Your accusation creates an undue mistrust by the taxpayers and the hard-working employees who day in and day out serve our city. This is not a good example of leadership on any level. You recklessly threw out those misguided claims that put the city employees, who are the backbone of our town, in a poor light. Mr. Mayor, we are asking for an apology for you after the hurtful claims you made. We sure hope you can work that into your mayor's report tonight. In conclusion, the managerial form of municipal government gives too much power to one person. It is too much like a big business or corporation, which is not suitable for our community needs. City managers cost too much, and your department has handled a portion of the job for less cost. With that being said, the IBW local 51 unionists members ask you to vote no on the change in government referendum for Oldesby on April 1st, 2025. We thank you for the privilege of your time tonight."
Thank you.
Ken Fee, Secretary of the Plan Commission. And I'd like to say that a couple of weeks ago, the council referred the issue of the change in government to the plan commission for review. And we've been working, I've been working very closely with Pat Barry and a few of the other plan commission members, to set up a public forum so that we can fully understand what the change in government might mean to us, good or bad, disadvantages and advantages. And so we've set up a series of forums. Number one will be on January 22. It'll be a public forum held at the Elks, right, Pat? And we have speakers coming in that will talk about the different forms of government. Pat, do you want to elaborate just a little bit on the speakers? Well, we initially reached out to Brad Cole, who's the head of the honorary municipal board, thinking that he might be able to provide us with some speakers. And he referred us to a woman named Dawn Peters at a city-county government association. And she was very helpful and referred us to a couple of potential speakers within her organization. And then referred us to another gentleman from a national association who has spoken at these type of forums in the past, most recently at the one held in Mattoon, I think. And he has agreed to come on the 22nd. I have not heard back from Steve or Scott about the meeting on the 22nd, but I would expect that they would be available because I asked them for available dates and they steered away from certain dates, but not the 22nd. So... That would be at least the first meeting. Right. We'd probably have other meetings scheduled between now and April 1st, when that decision has to be made by the voters. So this first meeting would be held, not here in City Hall, but at the Elks. We want it to be at a neutral ground. We want it to be big enough for any of the citizens of Oldesby to attend. So it'll be 6 o'clock at the Elks on January 22nd, barring any weather problems or any other problems. So there'll be more information coming out, both in the press, and we'll come up with an agenda. Yes?
So let me ask, when you selected the Elks, is that because your concern is that you have a wide enough group of people to show you wanted to have a...
Enough people. Enough of a space for people that might want to attend.
The only concern I have with that is, one of the things that was able to put up here was real nice to have this. So if anybody wants to bring any like spreadsheets or PowerPoints, there's this fancy little button here that way it gets distributed out to people that watch at home or something like that. Is there a way that it's going to be streamed? Because my understanding, when I talk to people from Mattoon, is they were very poorly attended, but there was a lot of people that watched them online and news coverage and things like that, so.
That issue came up.
Okay.
And we're working on trying to figure out how to stream from down there so that people would be able to watch it.
Okay.
So we're addressing that issue.
Excellent.
I'm willing to help you with any part of that, with the technology stuff.
I will.
It's not a problem, Ken. Happy to help you with that.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Wednesday, January 22.
January 22nd, 6 o'clock down at the Elks. And we'll go from there to see whether or not we need one more meeting or two more meetings before the April 1st election. So we would ask anybody that has input to show up that evening. And of course, we'll have the speakers and then have an opportunity fully to decide whether or not this is the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other public comment on any topic?
I'm Jay Baxter, and I would like to address the Oldesby City Council, those in the audience and those watching on the internet. A referendum to change Oldesby's form of government from a commissioner form to a city manager form will be on the April 1st ballot. There are many Oldesby residents that want more information regarding the difference between these two forms of government. It is now imperative that we take the imperative, the appropriate actions to ensure the citizens of Oldesby have the necessary information to make an informed decision when they vote on the referendum. They will be choosing how the government will, how the city of Oldesby will be governed in the future. At a previous city council meeting, a motion was passed to have the city planning commission take the lead in educating the citizens of Oldesby regarding the two forms of government. I'm very glad that Ken and his group have done that. I expect it will be done properly and without bias. I believe this is an excellent idea. The city planning commission's purpose is to plan for the future of Oldesby, and we need to focus on the future of Oldesby. There are many of you who believe that the form of government should change. There are those who believe it should not change. Opinions on what form of government is best for the city are strong, but I encourage, when discussing the options available to the citizens of Oldesby, that we focus on factual information. I won't get into that at this point. Information free of bias. The primary goal should be educating the public as to what their choices are so that every individual can make up their own mind on how the city should be governed and vote accordingly. Ultimately, we want what is best for our community, our family and our children. I hope that these discussions and this process can proceed with honesty, integrity and respect for each other. And with that, I will let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on any public topic? Seeing there none, we'll move on. Number 19, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Stefano.
Thank you very much. I want to start off by thanking Commissioner Finley for his time on this council here and his continued willingness to step up for our city. Don, when you threw your hat in the ring to fill Terry's spot, it was a breath of fresh air to know that we could have you back serving the city again. And while people may have disagreed with you in the past, there is no doubt that you genuinely care about this city. It's been an absolute pleasure to partner with you. There's no other colleague up there that I've had the most laughs with. We can at least, you know, even when we disagree on stuff, we can have a laugh about it at times. I have a great respect for you and your willingness to serve, and I'm going to miss you. So thank you again. I want to congratulate Jim Kleiner on his retirement from Chamblin and Associates. Jim, you've done a lot of good things for this city over the years, and even when we butt heads, I want you to know that I do admire all the hard work and all the things that you've done. I want to congratulate Ross Baker. Welcome, Ross. I'm sure you look forward to all the headaches that I'm going to give you, so. And then finally, I want to end with this. I'm still waiting on either Jay Baxter or the mayor to answer the question that I asked I'm still waiting on either Jay Baxter or the mayor to answer the question that I asked last meeting. Was there any analysis performed to determine what the impact of this manager form of government proposition would be financially and logistically? If there wasn't analysis performed, why was it not shared with the various stakeholders like the business community, elected officials, appointed officials, our labor unions, and the residents at large? If there wasn't any analysis, then why was the Plan Commission not engaged before we went and ran to the courthouse with this? How did, how did the petitioners know that this was a good idea? Should the public even support such a petition that was brought prior to performing any critical analysis on it? I think that's food for thought, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stephanelli.
Um, I really don't have anything. Um, I just thank everybody for giving me the opportunity, uh, to serve the citizens again. Um, so I know that when you sit up here, you never agree with everybody, but you work the best you can to make the best decisions for the city. Um, and Mayor Kern, I know we've never gotten along, according to your last email two days ago. Your last comment to me is, Finley, thank God you're leaving. So I, I just still want to thank you for the opportunity, even though, uh, I know you're happy to see me go, but I will, I do enjoy serving the citizens of Oglesby and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott.
First, I'd like to congratulate Deputy Chief and our new sergeant. Congratulations. I would also like to thank Ken and the Elks for getting that forum for us. Hopefully, we get a lot of people in there, make the right decision. Next, Don, I appreciate you. Glad you're here. You'll be missed. You have a good day. Take care.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baldridge.
Basketball Skills and Drills Camp will be on January fourteenth at six P M. at Lincoln School. It'll run every Tuesday until February twenty-fifth. Still a week to sign up at city hall or online. BB gun starts back up Wednesday through March fifth. I'd like to congratulate Deputy Chief Duttlinger and Sergeant Osefinsky. Oglesby is lucky to have you. We are appreciative and proud of all your efforts in serving and protecting our city so well for all these years. I'd also like to recognize the tremendous job Chief Margus has accomplished in stabilizing his department and retaining such quality officers. It's quite a feat these days. We appreciate your efforts. Commissioner Finley, I'd like to thank you for stepping in when asked yet again and helping guide this council and city with your knowledge and experience. You've shown great leadership and dedication to our city for a very long time, and I want to thank you for your many years of dedicated service. Thank you very much, enjoy your time away from all this. Perhaps we'll serve our great city again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number twenty, mayor's report. Uh, I'll start off with, uh, I, I would like to thank, uh, Commissioner Finley. I, I know we don't necessarily see eye to eye on, on many topics. It is true that that was the last line of a certain email that I did send. I, I won't go into the, the, the details that was said before that of, of why I said that line, but, but that's okay. Um, but I, I do appreciate, uh, it is, it is tough, you know, there's, there's a few people that sat, sat in the seat up here, both as commissioner, as mayor, and I, and I recognize the challenges with that. And I do appreciate your willingness to step up to serve your community again. I do appreciate that. Whether or not we agree eye to eye, I do believe that you are trying to do what you believe is best for the city, whether or not we agree with those methods, so I thank you for that, sir, truly. Um, I would like to thank, uh, both, uh, Jim, uh, as well, and welcome Ross. We'll have more, uh, to come on that probably in an upcoming, um, uh, council meeting. Um, I did have one other thing to put out, but since I was requested, I will, uh, respond to something here. Um, I, I know that there is a lot of things similar to what's going on to Mattoon right now. Um, a lot of, I, I, what I would call almost misinformation, whether it's through the commissioners. I am a little surprised to hear some of the misinformation stuff by some of the, the, uh, city, uh, employees, but that, that's to be understandable. Hold on, I'm, I believe it's, yeah, okay. So things like a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar salary with benefits, uh, the privatizing services by a city manager, that's not something the city manager can, can force. Uh, changing the labor positions, whether or not they negotiate something in the union contract is one thing. Uh, but I mean, the city officials are the ones that still have to sign off on that. Uh, and as far as apologizing for something, I didn't say anything incorrect. Um, now, if, if somebody wants to take a look at that and view that as me saying something negative about a specific employee, I did not. As a matter of fact, I believe we have fantastic city employees, they work very hard. Uh, they work extremely hard on how often I've seen them, uh, have to respond to calls, emergency calls and things like that. But to say that there haven't been timesheets in the past that haven't been abused would be an understatement. Uh, and if I have to get specifics to, to justify that, I guess we can release timesheets to where I want to prove that. But I don't want to necessarily do that, okay? Um, so I don't think I need to make an apology for anything like that because I didn't say anything that wasn't untrue. Uh, so, that being said, what I wanted to say though was I am looking forward to twenty twenty-five for, uh, what it's going to bring for Oglesby. Lot of exciting opportunities here. Uh, the first one is IDNR. Um, I think it's been about two years since we're waiting for a meeting. I think at the end of, uh, Mayor Rivera's, uh, term is when we found out that the Matheson Annex project, what they're looking to expand. We have not had a meeting with them yet and in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to have my first opportunity to sit down with those engineers um, to talk about what some of those future plans could be. So I'm hoping that in the next coming, uh, weeks to months, I'll be able to have something that we can talk about and maybe even have a timeline of when some of these things are going to happen. Um, over the last year, we've had about two dozen RFPs that we've responded to, about six of them actually had serious inquiries with three of them, uh, following up that we're actually continuing to work with on this upcoming year. Uh, we have the solar farm that is looking to be finished, we have the second feed that's coming. Uh, we have a possible diner that's looking to come in February. Um, and there is multiple land deals in the works. What I'm excited about is I have not, after the six years of being part of the city here, there's always been opportunities that you roll into the next year. I, this year though, it seems to be that we have the most variety and the most amount of opportunities. So while everything could fizzle out, that, that does happen with a lot of these things. I'd be surprised if every single one of them fizzles out, so I'm very excited. Uh, I think we have a lot of opportunity with everything going on, so I look forward to it. And that is all I have. Uh, next item is adjournment, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that one.
Roll call please.
I like that, Don.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stephanelli.
Aye.
Kern.
Jason inquired today about the I M E A N B A for that one draft.
Your adjournment.
The last I seen was you sent it to me to talk to Troy. Troy, when I went down there last time, Troy and everybody, you had already contacted him and were working on taking things out.
Must be so long ago, I don't remember.
Would have been the beginning of December.
What, what's it for? What's that?